Well, no, no, I'm trying. Don't worry, anybody stay right. They know better.
Can you hear us, Kevin? We're not recording.
I can. Yeah, it's recording now.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Welcome.
Kevin, please kind of take a note of how many are on, please.
Yes, I will.
All this meeting to honor which all rights and pleasures, please. I pledge allegiance to the God I love.
America as to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Adjustments to the agenda. We have one. The second executive session is not going to happen. It'll be number twelve. Public comments. The school board endorses the concept that community participation in affairs of the schools will essentially improve the quality of education for students. To be eligible to rest aboard and individuals who reside within the school unit, being a glory of the school unit, or be invited by the school board or superintendent to speak. The board shall give due attention to comments, contribution, from the audience, but shall not be expected to respond or take action immediately. Audience queries other than simple questions shall be referred to the superintendent, who shall investigate or consider the matter and report to the citizens and to the board. If the board action is indicated, the item may be included in any gender or second of the meeting. Comments will be heard for no longer than three minutes per person. Yeah, agree. Anybody got a comment tonight? Seeing none. Prove all the minutes, please.
Motion to approve the minutes of the school board meeting, September twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-two, barring any errors or omissions.
I got a second. I got a motion and a second. All in favor, Julie? Yes?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Lauren? Five all. Motion for the payroll warranty, please.
It was moved to direct the superintendent of schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed here in the subset against each name contained in school payroll warrant number twenty-three dash eight, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-three cents. Number twenty-three dash eight C in the amount of four hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. And number twenty-three dash D in the amount of thirty-four thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-nine cents on October thirteenth. That wasn't even that.
Second. Second by Don. Any discussion? Seeing none. Julie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Warren, yes, five all. Motion for the payroll warrant, please. Tom?
A motion, I direct the superintendent of schools for authorized payments by the town treasurer to each party listed here in the subset against each name contained in school payable warrant, S A two-three dash five student accounts in the amount of two thousand, thirty-two dollars and fourteen cents. And twenty-three dash sixteen in amount of one hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-two cents on October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Second.
Julie? I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Julie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Warren is a yes. Five all. Discussion of resolutions for the ball conference. If anybody, everybody read them to their ring back if on your computers, right?
Yes.
So we all did our due diligence and studied them.
Right.
Like.
Anybody have any burning question or how do they feel the resolution should go?
Number three dash B dash uh three point B point six point P. Alternate certifications. And four point seven. I don't know, I have some time running to those. I realize that candidates are short and hard. But I think that we still need to hold a certain criteria obligation to to make sure that the people that we get are you know, and from reading that, I don't, I just and maybe it's just the way I'm reading it into it.
Any comments, Kevin?
I I'm like Tom, I'd like to get the best candidate we can. But if we should have a criteria that they have a certain amount of time to get. So if it's a bachelor's degree, they need, they need to be working towards it, I think, but I think we want to get the best qualified person we can so they have all the credentials they need.
I don't see where it's so, you know, out and out like we're going to, you know, I, the way I read it is that we're going to take acknowledging that other fields might have something to contribute and are making more of an effort for the continuation of like studies about how we're gonna how we can bring that in or how you can continue that education most effectively to bring yourself up to par as far as educators go. That's how I read it, just like a, you know, a continuation of the study of how we're gonna get that done because of the shortage.
There is a lot of conversation too about the taking and allowing people from other fields, having a bachelor's degree in business and things see when I read it, that's kind of the way I was thinking of that, right? And I think that, I mean, just because somebody's been in a field, playing business for a while, doesn't mean they don't make a good teacher. Um, so I think as long as we keep up on those things and and some of us would be in our own system, having evaluation systems and support systems in place so that we can help somebody who may not, this may not be their first career.
Right. That's what I think, yeah, is right in the middle of what, yeah, you know what I mean?
You, I, I, I know just from the, from my side, from, from fire EMS. If you, if you are a certified firefighter, one and two, now you're, you're an EMT, paramedic or innovative. They wave along. And because they think that it's like in that field, you can do that. Well, it's like, it's like taking a firefighter and having him go into school and teach fire education. It doesn't work. It's got, the person has to have some background, has to have some knowledge in, in how to teach and how to do, you know.
Right.
That, that, and I guess my whole thing with it, these are proposed changes. But our policies and procedures can be what we want our policies and procedures to be.
Right. As long as we stay within the law.
Right.
I mean, we can, we can hold our standards, whatever you want. This is like a minimalist, yeah, kind of thing.
Right. Yeah, I like the, the standout part for me is for the continuation of the effort to study and initiate legislation that will create appropriate alternative routes for certification for teachers, which leads me to believe that it's someone from a different profession that might have something to offer and then the study of the fastest kind of streamlined way to get them to where they need to be to be within the school system appropriately.
CTE's been doing it for years.
Yeah.
It's a matter of figuring out, wouldn't get out of that with CTE people. Their education isn't necessarily in that specific thing, but they, they take a few courses and learn how to teach what they know as well. And they become pretty good teachers.
Yeah.
I don't think it's not a bad idea. There's such a shortage that you could train, you could give somebody, we have four classes you have to take in CTE. If you haven't taught before, you're having the education background. It's for educational classes that you take right away. You go to a teaching boot camp, so there's all kinds of things, resources to bring someone into that teaching position that already has the knowledge when they're gonna be teaching.
Right, subject.
So as, as a school district, are we voting telling Julie to vote for or against us?
I have one more question, Warren.
Well.
Is, is it typically teachers have to take, I think it's called the praxis? To be a teacher, is that what it's called?
That is what it's called. With COVID, they have relaxed that. They've actually taken it away. Uh, but I've heard that they're considering putting it back in for this next round of teaching.
Okay.
There's also mixed opinions on the praxis because some people are just not good test takers, but they're dynamite in the classroom. Um, so I'm not really sure where that's gonna land post-COVID.
But I mean, we've seen that right here in this system. You can remember, a lot of you can remember. When the mill went down, we hired people out of the mill to be teachers. No, you probably didn't.
Yeah.
And I mean, we got some great teachers, no, there's no doubt about it. But we also got a couple that works.
We didn't, we did end up getting Ms. Woslawskis out of the deal. When that happened, she was, we got her as a
We got, we're giving that.
Yeah, Mrs. Woslawskis was like, we talk about like having somebody fall into a position at the right time. She was one.
And, and we, we also extended the tuition credits because we wanted our teachers to become ma- masters so they could teach co-curriculum. I see Tom probably remembers when we did that, uh, maybe Warren. But we did extend out the amount of classes that they can take so that they can try to work towards their masters. And that's something we'd like to see, but it's not. I think we did put a time limit back then, didn't we, Tom, when they had to have certain criteria?
Yes. Right, within five years. But my understanding is we don't have that. We still, we don't, we did away with that, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, and I think personal opinion, I think that was wrong. I think, I think we should be offering that to, to better our teachers and want to down that road.
For teachers that want to.
That want to, yes. And, and it wasn't mandatory. It was if they wanted to go down there. Then we went out.
That's still available.
Okay, we still, they still can if they want to. Okay, I was, okay.
I think there was a point where there was some people we were gonna have to let go. We, I think we did away with the time limit on when they had to have certain things done. Um, because we did get to the point where we were looking at people who hadn't done what was in the contract and I don't know if Matt's there, he may remember that.
This second part, four point seven two, is important for me to give context to uh, three B sixty. Because I realize that they're talking about teacher specific, but this kind of fleshes out the you know, the changes that they're making are, you know, changing it from Common Core standards back to uh, standards within the main system of learning results, changing all of that stuff, which sort of supports the idea of up here, the continuing study of how to make things you know, better and what's best practices to prepare teachers um, to properly do. I just feel like it's a continuation of kind of like we're not just gonna throw them in there and let them sink or swim in there. So a plan, maybe. I like that this is the most changes we see basically on the thing because it's the most changing fluid thing every year.
Going to use, because they'll change it back.
Oh, yeah, for sure. And then we can talk about it again. It's like this.
Any other comments on this? Seeing none. How does the board want Julie to represent us at the conference? Yay or nay?
The one time where I do where everybody tells me to.
Don't worry, I'll be on your computer.
I know. Don't worry. I got you. I got you.
Does the board want to approve this?
I mean, I would. I like the change in language, more of an educational.
Julie said yes.
Yes.
Donnie said yes. Kevin?
I'm all right with it.
Tom?
Yeah.
I'm all right with it. Because if we hadn't done it, if, if it wasn't allowed, we wouldn't have been able to have an intro. Which
Right.
was very important for us. That's why, you know, I look at it at reality when we can't find staff or certain positions that you know, that conditional certificate stuff goes a long ways. So okay. Five all. Any, any other resolution on there that bothers anybody or wants to be discussed?
Well, the one that we were talking about earlier when we came in with the social security one.
Yeah.
I would like to see us go pay for them now. I think, I think that they should eliminate that. I think that they should repeal that government pension. I think that's, I don't think that's right.
You understand what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Tom, you want to explain that?
It's, it's the the way I, this, this is, teachers, a lot of teachers cannot collect their social security when they retire. Example, my wife can't collect hers. She's got the credits, but they told her because she didn't pay when she was a school teacher, which Millinocket doesn't do. On the town side, we do. We, I pay social security and I pay main street retirement. I, 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 I don't think that's right. I think that should be, even if it's an option, that, that they want to pay social security, they can and then they can collect. I just think that's the fair way to do it, in my opinion.
You gonna do that one, Kevin?
Yep.
Donnie?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I am. Any of the others?
No, I thought the lunch thing was, was what, but as I ran through it the other day, it's not, it doesn't address anything that, that
Doesn't have anything to do with the balance.
You know.
It's what we've discussed it earlier. The other thing is the banding. And I'm glad to see that finally somebody is standing up and saying, you know, you can't just throw them on the school system and expect them to to do it. So I think that's a good thing. Anything else? Okay, Julie's got her got her rolling this for the twenty-second.
Yep. Got my scribbled on.
Nine to seven.
Oh, nine, seven.
It's fine, it's fine, it's fine. I got a good book. I mean, separate, yeah, exactly.
Administrative reports? Room service manager? Mia? Yeah. Sure. And you can go right down, but you can be seen on camera and I can just get the heck out of the way.
Uh, so the beginning of this school year has brought about many changes for our school lunch program. We have four new members of our food service team, Tyler O'Brien, Karen Birmingham and Kendra Cummings. We're hired on at Sterns and Karen Loughlin is our newest team member at Granite Street. All are doing a great job learning their new roles. Um, many of the federal waivers that were in effect for COVID-19 have expired. Um, and child nutrition programs are required to operate in their traditional format for the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three program year. Um, this affects one regulation is that all meals are required to be in onsite to be considerably adversable. Uh, this affects the way we offer meals to our students over these days. Bag lunches for these days must be eaten at the school before dismissal. Uh, big thank you to staff and administration at both schools for successfully making scheduling changes to accommodate these new requirements in time per first for the state of nine twenty-one. Um, we have applied for an equipment assistant grant through the main department, education, department of child nutrition. It awarded the grant that will be used to purchase a new refrigeration unit with Granite Street. This month alone, we have served a total of five hundred and seven, five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight breakfast and five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen lunches to the students in our district. Um, menu is created for September. Have limited offerings in anticipation of being short-staffed. Fortunately, we are now fully staffed at both schools and are now able to offer more options for our students on a daily basis. We have also added more items for our car offerings at Sterns. Uh, Lori Arsenal has retired from her position as a food service assistant. After serving in children of our community for nearly twenty years, we cannot thank her enough for her service to our students and the experience she has shared with our new hires. She'll be great next.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody have any questions to Mia?
I, I have one question, Warren. I noticed when we voted in the new hires, we're, we're only under a dollar above minimum wage. Is there any, did we get a lot of qualified candidates or is that hurting us because of the pay? I was just wondering how, what we have for candidates.
But I think instantly. Uh, we did get some really great candidates, um, just enough, to be honest. We did lose at least one hired to the pay rate offered. She was able to get a position pretty much the day she was moved to start working in the leave hire period. Um, so that is something that affects our wage maintained employees.
Did you hear her all right, Kevin?
Yeah, I did. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mia. Anybody else have any questions? Facilities director. Give me a little bit of action, boy.
All right, I'm not gonna read this. I'm just gonna be the highlights. So summertime, we'll start from summer. Uh, since I haven't seen you guys in a while. Uh, but summertime saw the complete cleaning of both of the buildings, um, which is an arduous task. Uh, the custodians really do kick into overdrive this time and do a phenomenal job. We have hundred and forty-eight thousand square feet here and forty-eight thousand square feet at Granite Street. So nearly two hundred thousand square feet of floor space, if you figure that, which is what a super Walmart is. And we are literally cleaning that space with four custodians and years in the summer. Uh, every square floor is, is
Yeah.
uh, washed, waxed, stripped.
Yeah.
So I was looking ahead, you're actually on our schedule for this Friday, but where you're being treated for COVID.
Okay. Sorry.
So, yeah, so nearly two hundred thousand square feet of floor space that those, uh, those guys covered, the plan, five guys and a few cleaners and every wall, every light, um, tremendous amount of work. And done in the nine week span we have to do it in, in the hottest months of the year. So, you know, my hat's off to, to them. So it's certainly a busy time of year and I think their work shows uh, throughout both buildings. Uh, this summer also saw the completion finally of the heating upgrades that we did with the SR two grant money. Um, so it's oh, a little over half a million dollars worth of our replacement, replacement of unit sets at Sterns. Uh, heating control upgrades at Granite Street. Uh, everything is now converted to digital controls, so it can all be monitored on the computer. This actually makes our buildings, uh, from a health standpoint, what a brand new building would be today if you went out and built it. Through COVID, the federal government issued news indoor air quality guidelines requiring so much fresh air. We have to bring in fifteen cubic square feet of air per student in every classroom. Um, and I can actually prove that we do that and monitor that and exhaust the stalia that's in the rooms. And it's pretty impressive what we do with sixty-year-old buildings, uh, near Mohawk. It really is. There's, there's few places that rival that, just for indoor air quality sake. And indoor air quality leads to a healthy environment for kids um, and staff. And I, I think, I mean, I have to work here too, so I won't breathe. I don't wanna breathe all that stinking stalia from kids. But we've, uh, we were, you know, and with that comes not only the health aspect of it, but all the energy efficiency as well, you know, you see of more efficient motors and all the equipment that was put in and, uh, you know, we're burning less fuel for heating spaces as needed now. So real, a real good expenditure of the COVID funds. Uh, certainly, it was, it was a project that probably never would have happened otherwise and would have been an expense to the community to bond that money. Um, and now, you know, we were able to complete that with what was offered to us. The auditorium seating, the third section of seating was also, um, replaced, completing the seating project, and that's been a many years ongoing project, uh, with the addition, addition of some COVID funding and the, the local support and donations that were made, we were able to complete that and, uh, you have a beautiful auditorium. Stage curtains were also replaced and the proceedance in the back to fire retired material. Um, and so that kind of brings that all up to code. So that's another great project to have behind us. Um, still working on roof repairs. Our roofs are getting they're twenty-five years plus. Um, and it's an ongoing project from this point forward. The roofs are guaranteed for twenty-five years. You could get forty years off, but they do take some maintenance. Unfortunately, a lot of that falls on yours truly to get up on the roof these days and hang it away. Uh, so that's a continuing project at both schools. Um, we had some issues with the security system, the key card access system and the camera system here at Sterns. I was able to fix both of those and get those both back up and running. Happened a weekend at school that we uh, have power outage and it literally took the whole system down and had to be rebuilt overnight, basically, but we're able to get those back up and running. Kevin will be certainly interested in this, the fuel bed. I was, I'm gonna, I'm gonna describe this so while you're not even gonna ask me what. The fuel bed, uh, typically which we do in the spring, so we're able to budget on it going into that school year was postponed because fuel prices in the spring were in the five and six dollar range. Um, at that time, we made main power offices who we bid with, have bid with for years. We, they made the decision to bid later in the fall, hoping the prices would, would fall. Which they did, um, main power options put their bid out a couple of weeks ago. Um, and we only received one bidder, uh, on that bid, which is not typical. We typically receive four or five bidders to choose from. I spoke with superintendent that morning, um, great urgency to get it in that day, which we had one left, you know, less than a day to make that decision. Their price was three eighty-eight a gallon and I wasn't particularly happy that we got one bid, so I reached out to all of the vendors that had previously bid in years past. And I was able to get another forty-six cents off that price, so it brought our fuel prices three forty-two for the year. Um, which is almost a dollar less right now than what it currently is in Maine. The average in Maine is three, uh, is four or four forty-something. So we had budgeted four fifty for the year. Uh, and that was, we were biting our nails at the time, hoping that would cover the costs. Uh, so we're well under a dollar, under what we budgeted, um, which may help us down the road because electricity has gone crazy. So, uh, we may use some of the savings of fuel to offset electricity as we move through the year, but we'll have a better handle on that later on as we get towards the end of the year and hopefully our solar bond that we bought into will get towards the end of the year and hopefully our solar bond that we bought into will start paying dividends on that and we can have a better judgment where we stand with all that. Um and lastly, fall brings sports and fall sports, and that's been a, that's a busy season for us. Um that was something we used to contract, you know, we used to have higher additional help with and and uh you know, Mr. Bedore used to help us with the feed. We had a couple of other people and uh as well as myself and, you know, we did away with all those positions a few years ago. So it's all on us to take care of a lot of acreage and dairy for a lot of games and uh I'm not sad to say it's coming to an end. We want a basketball and hear that incessant dribble in the gym, which is a whole other thing, but uh I think we got a pretty successful season with all that and uh without, take any questions.
I have one, Warren. The the S, the S R grant, uh we had written into it about getting the the uh Sterns paid. Is that still gonna happen or is it put off or is it gonna happen this year or in the spring or?
That is still in process. I reached out to the paving company on multiple occasions and I asked Ralph of Public Works to actually reach out. I guess the paving company is swamped with work right now. Um it may be in, probably looking like in the spring, but we, the uh team met a couple of weeks ago to discuss the COVID grant money and that is still in the, in, you know, we still have until next, next September um to expend those funds. So I would assume probably that our best bet is in the spring to, you know, secure that. Now that we can commit, and part of the big issue has been not being able to commit on on the funding for it. So it could put us in a real hard spot all summer to not be able to get that project moving. Uh so now we're at the end of the season. They're, they're trying to get all these jobs done before snow flies and uh so they're probably gonna move us into spring. But it is still in the works as well as a few other projects.
Any other questions for Lloyd?
Oh, question, my comment. Many of you realize that this uh this position that Louis has maintenance of facility, facilities director. The anguish that we had over that position and the fight we had from the townspeople over that position. This is why we have that position. This is why that gentleman is doing this position. The money that is saved in this community by Louis and his team. And I would ask well, to any school in state of Maine, I've been around visiting other schools and, you know, it's phenomenal the job that you're here with the number of people that are doing it today. And I just wanna thank him and I just wanna make people realize that, you know, he's, well, you're awful heavy over there. You're awful heavy. We're not heavy. We're far from heavy, especially when it comes to things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Assistant principal athletic director Nicholas Cullen. I'm sure he's out on the field. You, would you like to read his report?
I just want to. We missed you. Okay, so with athletics. Um field hockey season is winding down. The varsity girls team is currently five and eight and working on fighting for the playoff slot. That's happening right now. I don't, no, the game isn't done. So it's happening right now and they had to have a lot of things in place in order to earn a playoff spot. So I'm hoping that they do. They've been working really hard. The junior high field hockey currently has a record of two, six and one. They've also been showing great improvement every game. Uh junior high football is off to a good start, posting a four-two record. Coach Dave Missu and Pat Mooney are doing an amazing job and the boys are playing great. Varsity football is off to an amazing start with a, well, it was a five-o record. Now it's a five-one record, but this, um so because Saturday they had a big game against Dexter. Coach Herring has done an amazing job with our football program and we are really lucky to have him. We have six junior high students who are playing soccer for Midway Middle School and they are enjoying their experience and having a wonderful time. That's good for Mr. Collins.
Anybody got any questions? Mr. Collins, Colin.
For those of you who are interested in the football that, and the staff need today, he said that the team has secured um a second place in playoff. So that's, and I believe that's Saturday and he said bring rain gear. So he was pretty excited.
Thanks. Any other comments? See none. Principal Beth P V, high school and Granite Street.
Um so I'm just going to go down and and do some quick highlights, but the staff and student food shop clinic will be held this Friday um with the help of the regional hospital. The Granite Street School Library um are starting off really great with eighty-six percent of their students having a hundred percent book returns. So we're going to hold the fall book fair on October twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth in the conference room. And we're excited to welcome parents back. In fourth grade, Mrs. De Silva and Ms. Halli are working on living wax museum projects. So this is integrated between literacy library, computer specials. Um and once they are done, all of the other grades will be able to come through and see what they've done. And then we'll also have a time slot available so that their parents and guardians can come in and see their presentations as well. So they're very excited about that. Mrs. Campbell's art classes, she has pre-k through grade two, working on directed drawings. Grades three to five are working on watercolor landscapes. Um the S T Graham process is in the works in some projects surrounding curriculum and technology are being discussed. Junior high art is currently finishing up their first painting project focusing on watercolors and techniques. In high school arts one and two, they wrapped up their color theory and color mixing unit. Sixth graders participated in a workshop with a Katany, Katany learning project. So they learned about edible plants and foraging and about animal adaptations. So they had a great day spent outside. Uh they were on the walking trail, you know, by the football field to do that. Seventh grade will participate in the program as well and the eighth grade will travel to Katnwood's in Water later this month. The Sterns karate class is going strong and has been well received by the students. Mrs. Hayes and Mr. McGivern presented the twelve students with their own Sterns karate team t-shirts. And Mr. McGivern is hoping to challenge them to gain their eighth level rating or a yellow belt level certificate by Thanksgiving. Um they're having a great time in learning about self-discipline as well as the art of karate. So here at the junior and middle school, uh at middle school and high school, excuse me, junior, senior high school. Um we are currently taking the N W E A's. The English department is working together. We have the seniors to write their college essays, personal essays and resumes. Granite Street will begin their N W E A testing soon. The high school mock trial team is gearing up for a competition at the Bangor courthouse on November nineteenth. They are going to participate in training with the Harvard mock trial team in Massachusetts next month, so at the Harvard Law School. This is a really unique opportunity for the team. The talented, uh the talent development extended learning program formerly G T has a new website and I gave you guys the address there. I believe it is also available on our website. The middle school humanities is studying the Holocaust through the eyes of Anne Frank and will be performing a one act production in January. Middle school STEM class is beginning preparation for the future city engineering contest. Um there's a lot going on. Uh the liberal arts class will work on the Sterns Inc. newspaper and explore the law through mock trials. The high school law class will be competing in a state lead the people showcase in March, in addition to the case law studies. French two classes in Rosetta Stone with Mrs. Brucker are going very well. So there's a leadership board in the library and students are enjoying the competition while they continue learning French. The Mohawk at school will also host a Veterans Day program on Thursday, November ninth, uh November tenth. Um the day will begin with a breakfast for our area veterans. Um and then we will have, um the program will last approximately two hours here. Uh we will set up and have Granite Street students pass over as we have in the past. This won't affect anyone's lunches or anything. So we'll have more information on that and who the guest speakers will be as we get a little closer and some things are solidified. So then with that being said, some special thank yous need to be extended. The first thank you goes to Terry Given. So although she has retired, we haven't allowed her much rest. Um and she volunteered to coordinate our Veterans Day program as she has in the past. This is a tremendous amount of work to put this program together and to execute it. So it will be a beautiful program and as always, a great way to honor our area veterans and allow our students to experience seeing and hearing from real heroes in their own community. My second thank you goes to John Maestro. He has donated books and I meant to bring one in, I'm sorry, but he has donated books in a framed picture to the school and I attached a picture there. Um the display is in the library. Um sending Johnny a formal thank you along with a picture of the display. He wrote this book about his father, John Joseph Robert Maestro, and his military career, particularly his deployment during World War Two. The elder Mr. Maestro grew up in Mohawk and was an alumni of Sterns High School, which is included in the book. And John told me that his father has fond memories of growing up in this community and that he was very proud of attending Sterns. So John Maestro contacted me and offered this very generous donation to the school. He began writing the book for his family originally and then it grew into a much larger project. So I would like to issue a public thank you to John Maestro for his generosity and his thought.
Any questions on this P V?
I just have the fourth grade wax museum. Laurel, I went through it last year and we didn't get to go because of COVID, but we got like the videos or whatever. It's so much fun. Like if you can get to it, because they can do it now. Oh my gosh. So they were, all those kids were so funny, so much fun.
Check, check the board or check their emails, because I think that you're gonna.
Yes, we did. Yeah.
So please go and check that out.
Anything else? Any of the screen.
Thank you.
Superintendent Dr. Shobri Lane.
Well, all I can say is my report fails and compares everything that's going on. But it is super informative for me to listen to your reports and also see the excitement that you have about the work that you're doing here. Um I I've been busy for sixteen days, but a lot of it has been, has been learning things that I've had no knowledge about. So I really just wanted to um tell you that in the sixteen days, I can see that you have hired great people, that you do have the school that you just reported that you have. And it is clearly because everybody comes and just gets it done. You guys could be in Nike commercial, because you just do it. Um I walked up and down the halls um of both schools. I've been to the, um I'm kind of going off script here. I've been over to um the city hall. I've met with the town manager. I've met with local superintendents, the Bruce from the bus, uh the alumni, uh Michael Crowley. So I've had, you know, sixteen days where I don't think there's been a day that hasn't had at least two or three, you know, hi, and I do what and you do what? And I write it down and try and remember it. Um but, you know, really, you guys hired obviously great people and have a great system going or else through all of the changes that you've had, it wouldn't look as good today and it really does. Um all right, so then my next little thing, I've also participated in a pep rally at Sterns, which was really cool to see um the excitement in the stands and all the cheering going on. And then, of course, that was right before they um prevailed over Hilton. So that was, that was, that was pretty good too. Um I've gone to a retirement party and I've met so many people, more than I can remember at this moment. Um I will be excited to have um you meet new student representatives because I think the student voice on, um a council like this is so important. And I know Ms. P V is working um with the student council to work through that process so that there are some super voices on here. That really excites me because I, I think that's a perspective that they could add and just elevate the things that you hear um here. Um I've done a couple of things online, uh school violence webinar, where they're kind of changing the perspective, you know, the duck and cover is gone. Um the the run and zigzag is in, but even bigger than that, there's the whole idea of let's be prepared and let's be aware. And so I think we'll, you know, kind of learn some more of that information. Probably have some conversations with you, Tom, and see what we can do to line this, both schools up to be as safe as possible and be ready. Um the story I always tell is like, we're all, we all know what to do with a fire drill because we've done them since we were in preschool and they just happen. Nobody really cares. It's like, oh, a fire drill. And we need to get to the point where we take this other type of safety, this other type of drill in the same way. How many years has it been since you heard of any school system who's lost a student in a fire? Like I bet you can't even remember. The data really is something like over twenty years. So in the school that I just left, we were doing, um we did our first of four incident drills. I pray that they were continuing with that. I had them all set up. But I think we need to get to the point where an incident drill is the same as a fire drill and it will save lives, once it just becomes something that we do. Um I participated in the uh Pennquist superintendent's group and my only comment there is look at the money, something good that COVID did, because we didn't have to travel. There was no meals. There was no mileage. And still I gained a lot of um information. Um I thank Mia for your report and uh we worked through getting her first uh claim submitted um for September. She did most of the work. I just had to push a button or two. Um Louis, um group, I had no idea that your group was so small with your, you know, your responsibility so big. And the more that you talked, I didn't know you guys kept the deals. So when I say I really learned a lot from your reports, I really mean I learned a lot from your reports. Um I've participated in several special education meetings. And I, I, I think that the work here is very good. There's a few things we can kind of work around the edges and uh improve or make more efficient, things like that. Um and I just want to end with, thank you for hiring me. It's been a delight. I see some things that we can work on and I definitely see things that we can celebrate.
Thank you. Any questions of Dr. Lane? No?
I told you, they're gonna be me and then I realized, look, Kevin's over there today.
Upcoming meetings October twenty-fifth and November eighth. I need a motion to go into executive session.
One more second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah, yes, Warren, were you gonna ask if they're all right for me to be in the executive session?
I did.
Oh, you did? Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Tom?
Yes.
Donnie? Warren's a yes, five oh. For the executive session, I have to ask everybody to leave, but there should be a motion after the executive session. If you want, if you want to stick around. Okay, thank you.
Hey, I'm going to make you host.
Okay.
So we went into executive session at five eighteen.
Donnie, Donnie, can you put me into the waiting room, please? Thank you.
Right now, soft recording. We've done that once. Yeah, solve the recording, we've done that once.
We are recording again.
Valen, do you have a day you'd like to start, like next Monday? Next Tuesday.
We're back and no recording and recording.
We have a motion, oh wait, we gotta wait for the rest of them to come in. Do we have everybody out of? We're on the executive session. We. Have a motion. That will be read.
Yes.
No, we need to resend.
That's what I was gonna say.
He needs to, if he resend and she rescinds her second. You can do away with that.
Kevin?
Yeah, I I moved to resend the contract for principal for Kyle Rutherford.
Second, rescinding.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to resend Tyler's contract as principal at Granite Street School.
Yes.
Any discussion from the board? Okay, in favor Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Donnie?
Yes.
Warren, five oh. Okay, so that was rescinded.
Okay. Yes, I'd like to ask you to consider make a motion for to offer a contract to Kyle. For an instructional interventionist for the Granite Street School. Beginning next Tuesday for the remainder of the school year.
So move.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion. By Donnie. A second by Julie. Is there any discussion by the board?
Tom?
We need, we need a salary in there and we need where the money is going to come from for that position. In that contract. For the for the public, so public understands where this money is going to come from. I mean, we all understand, but.
Yes.
We need to make sure that the the community understands where. Where we're gonna, where we're getting this money to be able to do this.
To make this, yeah, to make this change.
Any other discussion? Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Warren is a yes. It's a five oh. Okay, gonna start Tuesday?
See nothing else, no, we we, no need to address. What the monies and where the monies are coming from, I think. I think Dr. Lane needs to.
Explain that now?
Yes, to the to the to the community. So that so everybody knows the same thing, this is this is what we're doing, this is how we're doing. So that we don't get. Asked.
Sure. Absolutely, I thought you were meaning you wanted it in our contract, I I didn't understand.
No, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I should have been more clear.
No, that's perfectly fine and trying to look for a solution to move forward and support students at the Granite Street School. Looking at the Esser grants, grants that were already put into print and approved by the D O E. This this will also go in front of the Esser committee. So that will also happen before we would issue a contract. But we will propose that this intervention position is built, there's already two intervention positions there. And they just haven't been built, we've advertised and we haven't had interest in them. So the money is already there, it's already part of the. Esser committee's suggestions to the work and it's already approved by the D O E, therefore it's already in the budget. So the point will be to support students and by way of supporting staff and and it will support students. So that's where the money will come from.
Thank you, I I just think that we need to to be crystal clear with the public of what we're doing and how we're doing.
Yeah, and there is, there will be an email or a meeting kind of like tomorrow, the board needed to talk about it today. To make sure that the Esser folks are on board with that too, our group right here in Long Island.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing them. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Tom always motions.
Got a motion by Tom, a second by Donnie, Julie?
Yes, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Lawrence, a yes, five oh. Thank you, everyone.
What a nice first meeting. We will, so I have a date tomorrow. And he doesn't think that there'll be.